Okay, we've got to get a minute to get the recorder going.
Yes. I cannot record the recording session, but so far this is still live. No, I didn't. Internet died on me. Hey.
Did you meet the picture?
As of now, the internet is cooperating and I've got audio.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and. First up is CDC Director, Mr. Orger.
I'll be much quicker this time. Plaski County is one of the eight member counties of Kirksey. The Yankee Iroquois Regional Planning Commission headquartered in Monon. I am one of the county's representatives and currently serving as Chair. Mr. Mellon was the county commissioners as their their member appointee. And then up until he resigned, Mr. Young was the county council's representative of two Kirksey. That seat has to be filled by a member of the council. And so for the last meeting of the year and last month of the term, we would like to get the council to send a new appointment to represent the county at Kirksey. The last meeting, I don't know the exact date offhand, but it will be sometime around Halloween. And then you'll make new appointments for 2023 term.
All right, do we have anybody that's interested in sitting on the Kirksey Board?
I will tell you, it's like I said, there's only one meeting left and we do have Zoom attendance option. So whoever wants to, if you zoom on, if you got an internet. Sit in your living room and get on that last meeting.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. We have a nomination for Rudy DeSavatine to settle on the Kirksey Board. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah, this is this is for until the end of this year, correct? All right. Sheriff? You're up, sir.
I just had to map your request for the part-time to be bumped up seventeen dollars. Give you all the information on it. Just here to answer questions and all that. We have, we have the money. We're gonna use the part-time money that we have to use, so.
And this will actually end up saving money because of alignment or?
Well, you're gonna not lose any more dispatches because you're working with them. Because we're about two or three short. She's got four or two. She had two hires, one of them already quit. So I don't know. I can't tell you Tim what's gonna save money. All I can say is I don't cost you money this year because we have the money. And she's got one person that will start tomorrow. That's what she was trying to do is get some part-time people there that have been trained already. She had one that's in the high community, but she has hired. She had two ones left already. So she's still short with this part-timer. She's close. I think she's still gonna be one short. What's the point of getting? I'd actually say all the time. Yeah, well, kind of just got your company. They're well, they're in our budget today. They were like fifteen something. So you're already paying apart hunters more than yours. I guess that's what I'm driving. I, I, I'm looking at this really as different things, so we don't lose any more because she has, you know, she's worked a lot of hours. Now, I know what you're saying, Tim. I understand that anyway.
I, I wonder if in future, could we team up with another county or? Or outside to do dispatch work? And I know you said today, we need to talk to the town because they're dealing a lot of complaints. Right?
The town's about forty-five silver.
Yeah. Really helping us out.
No, for her deputy. Yeah.
Uh. Yeah, they, deputies make more.
Now, I guess I'm gonna ask you that question. If we bump this part-time up to seventeen dollars, are we gonna take a five percent increase this year too?
Oh, this is hard. I don't. Yeah, I mean, you know. In the past, I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't, but in the past, anytime we've given a mid-year increase, we have not the end-of-year increase. We did that with EMS. Maintenance. So I mean, you know, do you, I guess my answer, you know, is, you know, do we hold with? Practices or do we want to change that? That would be a decision to be made at, you know, when we approve the budget.
I think we should make the decision when we do the budget. The rate for.
I, I really. I will come to work. That's all, that's all I need. Asking for seventeen dollars for this part-time. Guys want to spread out.
Right.
You know, the rest of that, fine with that. I really need. First. Call him dollars or one. Two people. Have the money. Part-time budget, so that's what I like.
Very helpful. All right, we've heard what the sheriff has to say. What's, what's the council's question? More discussion for the sheriff? He's been to, you know, he's been, been to us at two meetings, you know, presenting at this meeting. So we've had time to think about it. What's the council?
I, what I think is that. It's, it's probably a necessary thing. We go down. A path that we don't really want to go down when we start changing pay mid-year. We, we did it for another eight, another department. I abstained from that vote for this very reason, but we did it for another department. I think he's made his reasoning clear. I don't like dealing with things like this mid-year. But we've already set our precedent for doing it. And let's do it.
On a motion?
Yes.
I would say just a little bit more discussion. It's very similar to here as far as, you know, it all starts with, or Jeff says it starts with. I don't want to go without it. I agree with you. I, this is one other thing for almost. It's almost sad that held this. This is where the appointment is right now, is where. For this emergency type of stuff and I, I guess I agree with Kathy's motion. Got the money for this year.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to English Dispatch's part-time pay rate, seventeen dollars an hour. Is there any further discussion? And I just want to say, I, I agree with both Kathy and Adam. We're darned if we do, we're darned if we don't. It's not a perfect scenario because we start doing this for, you know, when I said this with maintenance, I said this with, uh, uh, not so much with maintenance, that was a restructuring with EMS, you know. When we do this, unfortunately, you know, randomly, you know, it leaves everybody else out there looking back at us going, well, where, where's my pay raise? Why, why, why am I not getting an adjustment? And we always leave ourselves open and, you know, I'm not disagreeing with the sheriff, but it does.
I understand your, your point, but this is why I'm telling you and I.
Right. No, I.
And I don't like doing this.
No, I agree. No, we've been.
Cause I can come here and do it with the jail staff, dispatch, and I said it. I always try to do it through the budget process. At the point now that, you know, you're not gonna have a dispatcher calling EMS that Mike had worked hard to get that for. And I'm telling you, I'm at the same point.
No, so anyhow, we have a motion in a second. We have any further discussion? All the.
This guy's not gonna come here and work. Seventeen bucks. He's not gonna come up here and work part-time.
Did we give the highway, didn't the highway work part-time guy that had twenty years' experience? We didn't give him, did we? I know, but I meant they had some highway guy that was part-time. He was an retired man, he's known, he pays for it. This guy done dispatch before.
Workforce before. Contact. Get you seventeen bucks an hour. Holding the four. Fifteen. And Logan. All right. Motion.
How, where the sheriff walks. How do we? When, when is this?
Well, we said she wanted to start him tomorrow. And so can you make a direct to add to? I, I think he would understand, you know, he couldn't, he can start tomorrow and he. Pay.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really.
That possible?
Yeah, he can walk right in and sit down. Good to. I know, I, I, believe me, I understand why you guys hesitate, but I don't like. That's where I'm.
Anything? Anything else, Dan?
I don't.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. One thing that I'm, I'm gonna talk about, you know. Once again, you know, you know, the sheriff comes in, you know, he has valid reasons, you know, and a valid point. You know, when EMS came in, they had valid reasons, valid point. But we have lots of departments in this county that are. Lots of, not only, not only. The general workforce, but department heads, you know, people of leadership, people with different responsibilities, different tasks put upon their shoulders. And we're paying so many of them, you know, we pay everybody in the courthouse the same rate, whether you're, you know, you need to be, you know, no matter how many people you manage, your workload is, what your pass, your, your necessary qualifications need to be. And that needs to change. You know, we've discussed this before, but I'm putting it back out there again, that we need to. Think about. Bringing professional. Dedicate to it. We need to revisit bringing a firm in, whether it's Baker Telly or somebody else. I will say I have reached out to Baker Telly because of some situations that have been brought up and being budget time to see what their cost would be. Because when they did their last, when they gave their last cost back. Couple, a year ago or so, a couple of years ago. It was looking more at job descriptions, less about. You know, our pay scale, you know, how, how we pay our folks, what's reasonable, what's, you know, what, what, what? Standards are set by other counties that are like ours, not necessarily neighboring counties, but counties of the same size. How do they staff? What do they pay? How, how do we rate that? How do we fix some of these very big inequalities that we have in our pay scale? I know I've talked to Nathan since then and he said they, he's, you still were able to take care of that through the CDC.
This year's budget that, yeah.
Yeah. So anyhow, I think it's something. Right. I think it's something that, you know, we need, we need to get the cost for, and then we need to put serious thought to moving forward because, you know. We do not pay and compensate fairly across the board for people. And, and their workload and their job. My two cents worth of it. Hope anybody else has an opinion, but that's my thought.
I, I agree. We've talked about this every year that I've been on the council. If we have a line item under which it can come out this year. I would suggest that we go ahead and get a cost to see what it would be. We do this every year. Sometimes we do it every meeting of every year. We talk about salary and benefits. I say, let's do it. We have a way to pay for it. Let's do it.
Yeah, we also have, we also have Lawrence on us. You could, you got enough money to make this year make, but you won't have next year. I mean, the money's gotta come from somewhere, guys. Yes, I'd love to give everybody thirty bucks an hour. And we can get a nice group of people here that would just be wonderful work with. We have to have that real thing.
And that's a valid point.
Rudy, are you saying you don't like the group of people you have working for you now? Cause that's.
No, let's. The. Let's, uh, let's. Let's move forward.
Wait, it, it costs nothing to get a quotation. Is that correct?
Correct.
I would move that we at the very least get a quotation.
All right, we have a, we have a, that's a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to get a quotation and cost analysis on what it would take to have a firm come in and look at our pay scales and help us making a more fair and equitable. Pay scale. Do I have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I guess clarification. So I understand. I, I would just want to ask exactly. Minutes. Want to, this department has this type of workload? Or, or because perhaps their funding comes from somewhere else, look at it.
Yeah.
Little clarification.
Okay, I, I mean.
You're making a motion to hire somebody to do this analysis or to see what it costs to hire someone?
He asked for a.
Quotation, just a quotation. I'm not, I didn't ask to hire anyone just to get a quotation. Yeah.
I was just getting a clarification.
Like I said, my, my thoughts is to look at what. Like counties with like-staffed offices that, you know. Cover roughly the same amount of area, you know, has around the same population that we do. How, how their pay scales and stuff. May not.
What if this study comes back that says that some of the people are overpaid? Are we gonna cut their wages?
Well, I guess my, no, no, we wouldn't. No, we wouldn't.
If they don't do the study, you know, I gotta follow the study. Just like, we have so many studies we have that over however long I've been around. We get the study done and we don't even look. That's right.
Yes, I just, I disagree with that. I think we followed most of the studies that we have done of, of late stuff. I, I guess my question then is, is how do, how do we plan on fixing? The pay scale in the county? How, I mean, you know, we're just gonna leave it the way it is? And every time a different department comes in and asks for something, we're just gonna go, okay, we'll give it to that one. We're gonna give it to that one. We're gonna give it to this one. Or are we going to look at what these inequalities are and try and put a plan together to be able to budget for them? Might not be able to fix it all in one year. Might say, okay, they say there's some inequalities. We may say. No, but we can't go to that point. We're only gonna be able to do this or whatever. But right now, we're paying people basically whatever we're asked to pay them. And. It's not a fair system. I mean, you know.
Ken, can I add a couple of thoughts?
Yes.
So. Some of this data, some of these data are of it. On Gateway, it's usually a year behind. We don't have access to all of the benefits, values, that sort of thing. And that's where this, I think, might come in handy. The, and back early in 2020, when the pandemic first hit and I was trying to keep myself productive at home between emails and tele meetings over the courthouse and justice center project. I did spend some time looking at this. And I will tell you that, and I looked at probably seventeen counties that were either neighbors of ours or like Ken said, similar sized counties. I think like I had Park County. We were, if you, if I, when I did averages of all of them, we were pretty close to average on most, not all, a little below. But the other thing, and I, and I say this knowing it's probably gonna come back to haunt me from some angle or another. We might be the only county, certainly the only one I've ever seen, where all of the constitutional courthouse office holders are paid the same rate. Now, I'm not gonna pick on any specific elected official as having a harder or easier job, but I mean. Look at the workload that the auditor has. All of these meetings, budget settlement, all the property transfers that come through, all the minutes and agenda. I'm not saying that she should be at X and another department head should be at. I'm not, I'm just saying that across the board, we are one of the, if not the only counties that do that. And I might, I don't think we would say, oh, we've got this data, now we're gonna cut elected official X's salary. But night time, next time there's a raise, you know, maybe the auditor position gets a six percent raise, but the other office gets a three percent going to balance that outgoing. There are a lot of things that we still do because that's how we've, we've always done it and. Laura, she's here, but it's very, I mean, the, the demand that the auditor has, the, the, really. Between the skill set required to manage the financials properly and just the sheer breadth and diversity of responsibilities. Do we think what we're paying the auditor is enough? No, definitely not. How, like I said, how, you know, and I don't think, I think it's, this is a situation where term limits are probably really helpful. Some of those changes, you might have to wait until an office person turned out, so you didn't look like you were treating some people fairly and more and less fairly. But having a plan in place to get people like who have CPA qualifications, other accounting backgrounds, willing to run for this office that is basically the central nervous system of the county is probably not a bad idea. Whether that issue alone requires a study, I don't know, but that's really helpful information for making sure that we are getting people who have the skill set that Laura brings to the table that we want future auditors to have.
And what you said, skill set, you know, just like this, you know, sheriff's need at the time. That takes a different kind of person. It has to have knowledge for that. It's not just the run-of-the-mill person. And so they need it. I think we can sit here and look. I think we can. It's, it's like, feel like I could, uh. Feel like certain departments should have more and some should have less.
I think, I think that's what Tim's point was getting to. That's something that this board really wants to take on or have somebody tell them our wishes and go from the outside of it. It is a monster.
Not cover our butt, people still like us if we take.
I'm not saying that, Mike.
I'm saying that. I'm saying that.
I, I, I'm just saying that. I know how long it's gonna take. I know how long the budgeting process is gonna take us. And now if we want to tackle wages to get that done too. I, I mean, you could put me on the full-time payroll, but.
In part of the view, January, we had, let's pick out the three things we saw this year.
Yeah.
With your institution, you're. Running yourself, which is just wrong to instead you don't want to happen.
It did not, it did not work out as well as I thought.
Okay, so, so.
That's trying to tackle a problem in-house. Did not work out as well as I thought. That's why I'm more leaning to outside resources than trying to tackle.
That is, how are we gonna make sure?
Because, I mean, we, we, unfortunately, we all want to serve our community. We all want to do the best for our community. We all try to give up what time is available, but we are all also full-time employees. We have full-time jobs, you know. And to tackle on, take on some projects, it is beyond the scope of the time limitations of us that farm, those, you know, work for industry, those that, you know, have their own businesses. So unfortunately, that's why we have to reach out.
Something like a job for Jerry and Kathy.
Yeah. So anyhow, we had a, we had a motion on the floor to, I don't know, I guess first it.
We had a, we had a motion and a quote and a second.
Yeah, I, I guess my answer is, did you get your answer?
Yes.
You, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to start investigating and reaching out to get a quote on what it would take to do a wage analysis for Plaski County. Any further discussion?
Only wage, right? Is, is it just wage or how many people you have in the offices?
It's just, you know, all of it is, is see what company's in charge of it.
Right.
Right.
But. What's it? It's like hiring an engineer.
He's asking, what do we hire them out of?
Yeah.
So that was what Ken was bringing up. Ken and I looked at that. I found it in my inbox and Tim. It was mostly a sort of a workforce allocation. Do we have the right number in this department? Do we have too many in that one? The only part of their proposal that was looking at compensation was public safety at the time. So.
It's more like a job anal, you know, a job analysis. Do we have the right people in the right places? And what workloads does each person have in them, in them places? Right. So we have a, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passive. And I will work to get the information for us and have it for our next meeting. All right, moving on to. Alright, moving on to, um, transfers. The coroner has a transfer for nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars for, from autopsy fees to equipment. I'll go down through them all and we can make one motion or if there's something, somebody.
Make a motion to approve transfers as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve transfers as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, on the additionals, I've gotta make a couple of corrections. I'll let you know here. Um, the, like I put on the note there, the sixty thousand for bulk field, we voted to advertise that, at our last meeting, but it, it was waiting to be advertised. Like I said, Laura's tried to group some of these together so we don't pay as much in advertising, save a little bit there. Um, the coroner's, um, ten thousand four hundred and seventy-five for air filtration. That we need to approve to be paid, uh, from discussion that me and Laura had. Belt River Boat would be the best place to pay for that out of. Then when the CD comes available, then we'll do a additional and we'll move it from the ARPA CD back to Riverboat. Said that correctly, Laura? Uh, and then sheriff will be, uh, thirteen, three fifteen, or thirteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for the sheriff's pension. Thirteen thousand three hundred and fifteen.
Now, the sheriff's no reason, but this is a scenario. Last year, the budget was for twenty thousand dollars coming into twenty twenty-two. The prior year was twenty thousand dollars also, but it had weighed on the fees to be put in there before you actually had twenty thousand dollars. So technically, he didn't spend that much on that fund. And when the DLGF went through to. They've got to reverse that budget request, so they saw a reversal. However, when they finalized the budget, they really didn't pick that up, so they only approved his budget out of the pension for six thousand. They actually spent twenty thousand, definitely that budget, and I never made a correction on it, but so by doing this, we're correct in that. It's just, it's kind of a pain. I remember seeing that when that approved budget came through. Okay, so this fixes that, this fixes that. Okay.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, advertise the additionals.
I'll make a motion to advertise the additionals as discussed.
Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Pass. Alright, we need to approve and sign the, uh, July eleventh, twenty-two, twenty-two regular, regular minutes. Oh, then the, yeah, the, the. Yeah, then we have the special, the special session, uh, seven oh six, twenty twenty-two. Alright, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Uh, we all know that the budget hearing started today. It'll be tomorrow morning as well, starting at eighty o'clock in the morning. Uh, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM will be our public hearing date for the twenty twenty-three budget. October tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM will be our adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, we have some, there's been some discussion that we had, we had at our, um, budget hearings today, a little bit talking about lit rates, reallocations and discussion, um, you know, looking at, uh, how we can shore some things up, make some things, uh, work better for us. Turned that paper out. Hate to put you on the spot, Nathan, but you unfortunately have the paper in front of you, I'm sure.
Good news. I don't know if there's all good news, but the good news is that the Department of Local Government Finance has forecasted our income tax revenues to increase by about another eight or nine percent from this year to next year. Not as much as the increase from twenty-one to twenty-two, which was somewhere around thirteen percent, but still a nice addition. I hate it. That being so, the Public Safety Access Point Lit, the one that the council adopted to fund dispatch a couple of years ago, that is the only income tax rate that exclusively goes to the county at one hundred percent. So once you shift some of that to general economic development or public safety, we lose a, or we lose about fifteen percent if it goes to economic development or public safety, we lose, I don't know the number, but substantially more because we share with more out of general. That's the downside to this. The upside is that that is far and away the most exclusive tax rate fund we have. If it is not for dispatch, it can't be spent. Sheriff can't spend it on patrolmen, can't spend it on firearms, can't spend it on anything but dispatch. Yes, sir, Public Safety Access.
Public Safety was.
Yes. Um, so right now, with that three tenths of a percent rate, PSAP is anticipated to generate eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. That means that at, looking at what is budgeted for this year and where we anticipate, I, I anticipate, uh, ending this year, what has been requested by the sheriff's office for budget next year, that at the end of twenty twenty-three, we would be looking at a balance of about six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which is a nice cushion, but is also more than the sheriff's department has even requested for this year's budget. So before the first tax revenue came into the county in twenty twenty-three, we would already have enough money to pay that year's budget, notwithstanding any increase. At the same time, the EMS budget, the Public Safety Fund is going to be really, really tight by the end of twenty twenty-three based on current number. Now, Brandon turns some back at the end of the year, that'll alleviate some circumstance situations. But if he were to spend everything in his budget this year and to get and to spend everything he's requested next year on top of the little bit that the sheriff's office has requested in that fund, you would end twenty twenty-three with a balance of negative thirty-seven thousand dollars. Generally, I think the state frowns on negative balances in county funds. So there are a lot of different numbers you can play with. You could reduce the economic development rate if you wanted to, but you could reduce that three tenths of a percent PSAP to two tenths of a percent. Still end up with more than fifty percent of the twenty twenty-three budget covered already and move most, like I said, we'd lose about fifteen percent, move most of it into the regular public safety rate so that you would end up with maybe two hundred thousand dollars, still less than the annual budget substantially, but a positive balance at the end of twenty twenty-three and not have potential risk of going in the red and having to play, uh, rob Peter to pay Paul, moving more back into general to make sure that we don't go into the red on public. I said, we discussed earlier in my budget meeting, um, the economic development income tax is in a good enough place that even if you funded my entire budget request at the maximum with three full-time people in the office, it would still probably end up with net positive revenue. So there's room to play there. But this is maybe the cleanest way to look at that while freeing up more money for the county because so much of that dispatch money is just gonna sit there until you get rid of it or the sheriff puts in like a margarita machine in the dispatch center. So you would still end next year, you would still end up next year with a really healthy budget or a balance in the dispatch fund.
I guess, you know, that was the point that I was trying to come up with and make it, put it together so much better, cleaner. Uh, you know, it's fact that, you know, when we, when we did the PSAP, changed that, you know, it was known at that time that that was gonna become a big savings account, couldn't use. We didn't have a need for all that money there. And now we see there is a need to move some of it out, shore up other spots. So that's just another tool, like we talked about in our budget hearings. I mean, this is a tool that all counties use. We're one of the few that didn't use this tool to be able to shore things up. So I'm, I'm not saying anybody needs to make a decision today, but we need to be aware that this is what's going on and, you know, we solve some problems.
And the rate needs to be, so I understand, rate needs to be changed. If, if you left it alone, try to transfer. Move, end.
Correct.
Changes that. Clear.
Yeah, this, I mean, this is something we worked on last year. You know, at that time, we all thought it was a, a, a good situation. Uh, it just unfortunately ended up happening in the right timeline.
And, and the nice thing about moving into Public Safety now, is that worst case scenario, you can use Public Safety for dispatch. You can't use dispatch.
For ambulance or patrolman. So while you risk, like I said, you lose about fourteen, fifteen percent of it because you're sharing it with the towns, you at least now have that greater flexibility with that, um.
Perhaps the challenge is right back.
Well, and, and that might be the thing, you know, I know that's the question, um, that came up earlier, the idea that the county is covering all of the costs of dis. I mean, that said, everybody in the county is paying that dispatch rate that only the county gets and we're not sharing it the way we are others. So there's the argument to me either way, but right now, that PSAP fund is really healthy relative to what we can spend. And if that changes in two or three years, this is a process the council can undertake every year if you absolutely have to. Might grow a little tiresome to do it every year, but you have the opportunity, these, it's just about August third every year, I think DLGF releases their preliminary estimates and that gives you till the end of October to get any changes made to your lit rate for the next year so that you can be flexible based on your needs.
I know one of the, one of the things that when we talked about this last year and we agreed to it, that was one of the things that, uh, uh, we were gonna go back to the towns and ask them to, you know, participate in it, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna get an increase in money. You know, they need to help participate into paying for nine-one-one and those, those functions.
We just need to follow through.
Yeah, yeah. Fortunately, the change didn't happen and we didn't follow through on going.
The, um, this needs one or two?
Needs one public hearing before, probably, I mean, you could do it at your October meeting, post a hearing, vote on the ordinance if you're so inclined. But we've got, I mean, ideally, it'd be nice if by the September meeting, you have a consensus so that we can draft an ordinance that reflects the right numbers and get the public notice in the paper. But you've got a month to mull on it. Look, and I, look at other options. Like I said, you could move, cede it to Public Safety if you wanted to as well. That's little more just rearranging. It doesn't change anything with the PSAP provision, but you have those options.
Any further discussion from anybody? Any questions on this? I would challenge the board to reach out to those and, you know, ask questions, get the answers that you need so we can decide if we feel it's the right thing to do or if it's not the right thing to do so we prepare for our September meeting. Alright, moving forward, if there's no further discussion, um, does anybody have anything to add on the challenge to solve? Like I said, we, uh, I don't know if, have you talked with anybody more? Yours pretty much been downtown budget hearing.
Yeah, no.
I, it's kind of maybe personnel related. From, uh, the minutes of the joint session, I'm sorry, both of my mics are dead.
Oh, mine.
No, that's okay.
Oh.
Um, I'll try to talk about that. Uh, from the minutes of the joint session, we were going to change the personnel handbook to get the CDC director into forty hours. Did that change, I mean, can, did we change the handbook?
I have not seen anything from, uh, Colleen or on that or Kevin, so let me, let me check on that.
Thank you.
Kathy, I do have batteries, you told me that sooner, I think.
Yeah, that's okay.
Alright, well, is there, is there any board reports, anything from the, the board, any discussion from the board?
I have one, uh, the, what, three or four months ago debate. We supposedly allocated forty-two thousand or something like that, forty-five thousand dollars, uh, to help us with grants. And did that ever get implemented?
I'm, I, I'm not aware of it being implemented. I don't know if anything through Nathan's office.
That was for the Baker Tilly not to exceed or assisting with ARPA. Uh, to date, we have only asked them for minimal help with the ARPA. They've had one call with.
Well, since then, we've found out that there is other, uh, people out there that, um, actually work with the county to do this or, I mean, without having to be. What, uh, I'm not sure, what, uh, who was it that they will help you with these, these grants to write a grant? AIC.
What, what grants do you want to write?
Well, this was supposedly, we did this to where any and all grants, they would, uh, help get them written and I, they would let you know what they could be used for. That's my understanding. It's what they were supposedly hired to do. And I guess this, uh, other will, will do the same thing.
Just what I understand about grants, first you have to know what it is you wanna write a grant for. And then you can go to Baker Tilly or AIC or whatever and say, is there money available to help us with this? And I believe we were looking at Baker Tilly to help us with grants as they might relate to the courthouse project.
No, 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 what, what, what Tim is talking about is helping us to navigate the final rules regarding ARPA and then to direct us to any other related funding sources that might help. Not to write any. To, that said, like, we have only, it's a not-to-exceed contract based on actual service provided. We have only asked their help once. I don't think we received the bill from them yet for that. It was one call basically telling us, as I have since relayed, you're under the ten million limit, just commit it all to revenue replacement. And that is all we have asked them to do. So, eh, there's, unless there is something else, the commissioners decide they want to ask of them or I am instructed to ask of them, we're not going and saying, hey, come do more work. To help us with finding grants if they're, or, or relevant funding sources, not so much with writing. But it's things tied to, related to ARPA beyond the normal, the, the standard ARPA. Yeah, we're not paying, we're not just paying them like a retain, we're paying them when, for where they actually.
But we also would work with the AIC?
We could, yes. There's nothing stopping us from making, making better use of AIC.
We are not getting any guidance on ARPA.
Not really, just that first conversation. That's all we've asked from them.
But I, I don't think it's not so much that we haven't gotten any guidance. They're only, you know, we haven't asked for, we haven't asked them any questions or, or asked them any guidance, so.
Because we can spend it almost literally however we want.
Right.
So that's the guidance that we got.
But that's not really. Don't put it anywhere.
Projects.
I guess what I was getting at is if we've got other avenues that doesn't cost what they're, why don't we?
Utilize.
I would like to go that direction versus this way.
Yeah, there's, yeah, if there's other avenues out there, of course, I mean, that, that can assist us and what I'm gonna recharge makes very good sense.
Because what, my understanding was that they, that we voted that way is that they would find uh funds out there that we don't, we didn't even have any idea that was out there.
My understanding.
Yeah. And uh, and that they were just gonna be on board for this, at least forty-seven thousand dollars, yeah, or could go up to.
We've probably gotten two hundred bucks worth out of them.
Okay, alright.
I got a couple things. So I just asked Kevin about this uh property out there on uh, the Russian out on two hundred. It sounds like, is that gonna sell or what?
That is in Kevin's hands. Um, the best I can tell you is that the last time Kevin and I spoke about it, he had grown impatient with Mr. Voronov's wife, who has a court order stating that she can sell it and Mr. Voronov has to follow her lead. Um, at Mr. Tankersley's request, I had not been in communication with either of them. I did receive an email from Ms. Grofsky last week asking a couple of questions about the machine that is out there so that they can get a sense of what its value might be. So it sounds like she has not given up her attempt to sell the property yet. Uh, but I, Kevin has asked me to step back on it, so I, the most I can say is I know that if we get to the point, there is at least one interested buyer depending on whether or not he and Ms. Grofsky can reach a price that they agree on. Otherwise, Kevin will most likely initiate the foreclosure process that he has held off on hoping that we could avoid that mess and just claim the proceeds of the sale.
Uh, the other thing, county, what, what did, what did the commissioners decide on that uh the property that Brother County building, the, the old folks home? Was React willing for you? Well, I thought they were gonna keep the, the guy called me, uh, I think he's a little maniac. I don't know. He's a good kid, he's a good dude. But he called me again and said, hey, I'll buy whatever. He goes, they wanna keep the little metal building, hey, keep the metal building, I don't care. So I'm gonna buy it. So.
I guess I'd say that's, you know, we, we set the how, how it's, the sale is to be handled and that's what we've passed on to the commissioners and it's up to the commissioners to manage the sale. But I would say that's a good question for the commissioners. I mean, I.
Discussion I, I uh heard about was, I think some of them were wanting to keep the metal building for React.
Yeah, I know React was looking, they were looking to uh, uh, do another survey and. But he would have, yeah, they would have answers. No, I mean, I'm glad he's interested and I, hopefully they can get this thing figured out and get it, get it sold. Any further board discussion? We'll open it up to public comment. Anything from the public? Alright, our next commissioners' meeting is, the next commissioners' meeting is Monday uh, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at eight thirty AM, or excuse me, uh, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at eight thirty AM. The next council meeting is September twelfth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM and the next joint session is ten-ten, twenty twenty-two at six PM. We'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you.